We called this meeting to order. And welcome, everybody. We thank you for coming out here tonight. I hope when we leave, there's no sleep falling. There was a little bit, little tiny puddles of ice when we came in. I want to start by asking Mr. Allen to start us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand.
Please stand and remove your hats.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving right along, we'll go to Mr. Reddick.
Both the county schools will provide quality educational programs and services to ensure student academic and vocational success.
Thank you. Now that we've got our mission statement, Ms. Duke, is there any public comment? All right. We'll keep going into number two, the agenda. If everybody's had a chance to look over the agenda, I request a motion to approve.
Please note that I won't be booting on February 5th minutes.
Okay. Great, thank you. Now that we have a motion and a second, take a vote. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, motion carried. We're going to go on to the minutes. And Lisa, you heard Mr. Hodges. If you've had a chance to look at the minutes, and I think Butch-
I'm going to recuse myself from January 29th.
Right. I saw Butch was not there for that meeting either. Can I ask for a motion to approve the minutes?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? All right. We're going to keep going. Do we have all three here for our character education? Okay, we're going to go right into the portion that's Character Education Award, which is why most of you are here tonight, and we thank you for coming. And we're going to turn it over to Mr. Billwell, our vice chair, and Ms. Nicole Howard Spencer.
Good evening. The character traits that were recognized in our schools for the month of February was kindness. At the elementary level, the nominees were from Bath Elementary, Daniel Elliott, Daniel Elliott; from Chaco Winity Middle, Cheyenne Sparks; from Eastern Elementary, Samaya Dennis; from John Cotton Taylor, Taiwan Copeland; from John Small, Tyquan Harold; from Northeast Elementary, Mary Evatt; and from SW Snowden, Cameron Weatherly. And the winner at the elementary level was from John Cotton Taylor, Taiwan Copeland, if you will call both.
Congratulations.
Taiwan is a third grader at John Cotton Taylor. His mother is Ms. Latasha Copeland, if she will stand. And he was presented by his teacher, Mr. Bratcher, if he's here, if he will stand. And Mr. Bratcher wrote, "We recently had a new student arrive in our class. The very first day of school for our new student happened to be the same day we were going to our Hall Mart store. In order to buy something at our Hall Mart, you must earn Tiger Bucks throughout the year by exhibiting good behavior. Our new student had not had a chance to earn any Tiger Bucks to spend at the store. Taiwan, on his own, decided to give our new student ten of his very own Tiger Bucks that he had worked hard to earn. Taiwan told no one what he had done. During our trip, our new student bought an item to me to purchase. I asked him where he got his Tiger Bucks, since this was his very first day of school. He informed me that Taiwan had given him ten Tiger Bucks, and I asked Taiwan if this was true, and he said yes. I asked him why he did this. Taiwan responded that he felt bad that the new student couldn't buy anything. He didn't want the new student to see anyone, everyone else excited about having bought something and having him being left out with nothing. I was proud of the compassion and kindness that Taiwan showed to a fellow classmate whom he had just met." We say congratulations, Taiwan.
A certificate and a medal for you to put in your room and just to look at and know that kindness is what it's all about. What I'm going to show you real quick, once you walk around the board and shake everybody's hand, okay?
You have a handful of them.
I'm so proud of you. Oh, come on, you're late.
Get an award.
That might be safer than shaking hands.
I know Mom's proud, don't you, Mom?
Yes.
At the middle school level, the nominees were from Bath Elementary, Eva Sutton; from Chaco Winity Middle, Noah Smith; from Northeast Elementary, Liam Lincoln; from PS Jones, Anna Claire Bilbro; and from SW Snowden, Yamalit Osorio Rosellino. And the winner at the middle school level was Anna Claire Bilbro. She will come forward. Anna Claire is an eighth grader at PS Jones. Her parents are Michael and Bridget Bilbo. They will stand. And she was presented by her assistant principal, Ms. Juliana Harris. She's here as well. And Ms. Harris wrote, "As an assistant principal, my days are often spent working with students who have made mistakes, and a large focus of my time with them is teaching them how to be kind to others, helping them think about how their actions make others feel, and helping them understand that they have the power to impact others around them in a positive way. What I don't always get is the opportunity to witness acts of kindness by students within the hustle and bustle of daily life as an administrator. What is even more rare is finding out from a student how another student has impacted them through an act of kindness. However, a couple of weeks ago, I happened to witness just that, and it was a wonderful moment that brought tears to my eyes. One of our students with special needs was standing in the hallway during a class change, and he had tears streaming down his face. I approached him and asked what was wrong. He told me that he hadn't had the chance to see his best friend, and he really needed to see her. I asked who his best friend was, and to my surprise, he stated Anna Claire. I could tell that he was set on seeing her, and so I found that she would be coming in our direction in just a moment, so we waited. I watched as he found her coming down the hallway in the midst of her friends, students considered role models here at PSJ. When he saw her, he could hardly wait for her to get there, and he began to bounce on his toes up and down. He walked in her direction and gave her a quick smile, a wave, and a hi, and without hesitation, Anna Claire reached out in the midst of all her peers to say hello and give this student a quick hug. The smile on his face was priceless. It could have been quite easy for Anna Claire to dismiss this student, to be embarrassed, or simply to ignore him. However, she chose to take a moment to acknowledge him and brighten his day. As this student and I walked away, I couldn't help but ask him, 'So how did Anna Claire become your best friend?' His response was this, 'She is my best friend because she's always nice to me. Not everyone is always nice to me. If there's one thing that this world could use more of, it is kindness toward others. Anna Claire, although she might not even recognize it in herself, is the epitome of kindness. It is a trait that she embodies in such a natural way and makes others feel better about themselves, more confident and secure, because she shares her kindness freely, looking beyond individual differences in a world where differences are all too often in all that matter. It is with great pleasure that I recommend Anna Claire Bilbro for the Character Education Program, traits of kindness. Congratulations.'"
I'm Brown.
You got my mom to congratulate you.
Thank you for your kindness, which I know came from your mom and dad.
God knows what the family that you look from, okay, Brian.
Congratulations.
They're not giving you much credit at all, Mike.
I said mom and dad. I just slid the dad in there.
At the high school level, the nominees were from the Early College High School, Beckett Stevens; from Northside High School, Taylor Chase; and from Southside High School, Darian Hale. And the winner at the high school level was Beckett Stevens. He will come forward. Beckett is a 10th grader at the Early College High School. His parents are Daniel and Tamara Stevens, if they will stand. And he was presented by his teacher, Ms. Catherine Allgood. She's here. And Ms. Allgood wrote, "Beckett Stevens demonstrates kindness every single day. He goes out of his way to include fellow students who do not have many friends and listens to others who are having a rough day. He is considerate of others' perspectives and encourages others to show kindness through his own actions. Recently, a member of our nutritional staff seemed sad, and Beckett asked her if she was okay. The employee explained that a relative had recently passed away and that she was having a hard time. Without any prompt from anyone, Beckett created a sympathy card and asked the students and staff to sign the card. Beckett's actions are just one demonstration of Beckett's kindness and ability to lift other spirits." We'll say congratulations.
Congratulations, sir. Yes, sir.
So those winners, if you'd like to come back, love the congratulations.
He's getting it right. He's got the tits, we tend to get it. Yeah, put him right to measure.
I'm sorry, parents for pictures?
So trying to take all the credit now. All right, before we go on to the next one, I want to take a moment to recognize two of our TAs, and they're not prepared. But they had a meeting on Saturday morning at Brown Library that Mr. Cheeseman and I were able to attend, and we thank you for the invitation. But I'd like for them, if they don't mind, I want to introduce them. They have formed a committee, and the TAs, the teacher assistants from all across the county, are invited, and it's where they come together and they talk about the things that they're doing, the things they want to do, and how they're going to get there. And it was such an informative meeting that I would be remiss if I didn't recognize them. And Ms. Stillings and Ms. Evers, will you please stand? Do you have anything you would like to say to the board? This is your moment.
We just welcome, our meetings are open. If anybody would be invited to come. Ms. Stillings usually sends out an email, and she'd be really glad to get your contact information. And you're welcome to come and, you know, wish your concerns, anything that we can do to help, you know, the other sisters in the county. We'd be glad to do that.
And Ms. Stillings?
Yes, we're just, we're very grateful that you all attended on Saturday. Great positive thoughts. I've got emails. People are excited, would love for you to come back again, or, you know, anybody, we'd love for you to come. And just kind of, you know, pile around with us and, you know, get some information from us, and we get some information from y'all.
They had a great cross-section of the TAs across the county. Ms. Stillings is the TA from Eastern Elementary, and Ms. Evers is a TA from Chaco Winity Primary, but they were there from other schools as well. And you know Saturday was a nasty rainy chilly day, and they had a huge turnout. So congratulations to them, and thank you for what you're doing. We would be absolutely lost without our TAs in Beaufort County Schools. So we thank you both very much. Now that I have sufficiently embarrassed the both of them, we thank you for coming tonight. As much as you are more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, I feel like most of you came here to see those great students of ours receive their awards. So we're going to give you just a couple of minutes. If you want to go home and do something more fun than a meeting, you are welcome to go now.
They didn't come to see you?
I don't think they did.
Thank you for coming out tonight, though. It is because of you our children continue to do so well. Thank you. You know, when you leave, Michael's going to take all the credit, but we know.
I'll do it in closed session.
We know the truth.
And then there was two.
I really cleared a room, didn't I?
Well, he don't tell, he's on the side. He don't tell. You don't say, what, no, there's more now?
You didn't just find out, you just count, you tomorrow.
I don't know how he's, hey-
I know, I got the feeling, I got the feeling, I got you, I got the feeling.
I don't know how he found out it, wife told me that he didn't have it.
All right, we're going to continue on. Now we're into the action portion of our meeting, and the first one up is 5.1 capital update and project requests from Mr. Stanley Hudson. It's got an attachment.
Who has two free arms now.
Yes, got the lease for today.
Still no picking up, but I don't have to wear my appendage.
What do you want us to look at first, Stanley?
I don't know, which one do you have first?
We have, the first one is Chaco Winity Middle.
A Chaco Winity Middle School, NC Sound. Let me move mine around. This is for a replacement of the existing paging system, which is over 25 years old, and the system that is there is no longer supported. They have six classrooms that we've had two different companies come in to look at and see if we could get the sound back to the rooms, and they are dead into head-in equipment. So we can't adequately get sound, and our sound system is used for other things besides paging, as part of our intercom for fire, emergency lockdowns, so it really falls under our safety and security, so.
I notice there's just, is this who we have to use?
NC Sound is the only provider of the system, which is the system Quantum that we've got in our other five schools that we've upgraded. So we would like to stick with the same thing, because years past, we've got some of every kind of system there is in our school system, but they support Quantum. They are a member of a pre-negotiated bargaining for the state, and we get the state pricing already pre-negotiated, which is before y'all, in the amount of $57,064.80, and this will be funded through safety and security.
And I don't have that in front of me, so I apologize, but do you remember what we budgeted for that?
It wasn't a budgeted item.
So we didn't, I know it falls under the big umbrella of state, but we didn't line item this at all.
No, ma'am.
Okay, I couldn't remember. That's would be why I couldn't find it. Okay.
And we have some other ones that are coming up. Northeast is giving some problems, and we've got some other ones that need to be upgraded too, but they'll, I'll be coming back before y'all as we get those quotes in.
Okay. Do we want to have a discussion?
We had $150,000. How much, I was trying to figure out what we had ongoing. It wasn't that much, you had $138,000 last time we checked.
Right, I didn't, that's why I wasn't sure if this was something separate, or it's going to fall, come out of that money.
The last meeting was $138,000 bucks.
Yeah, and do you know what else needs to come out of that? Is it cameras?
Last, but I was wondering how many cameras.
We're doing some upgrades at some of our other facilities currently. CMS, EdTech, and PSJ, and Bath Elementary's all getting upgraded.
Since this has taken such a big chunk, I want to make sure we have-
But we have already encumbered those funds for everything besides Bath, so we're in good shape.
I think it can hold it.
Okay.
The main quote says, or the first page says 96 stations, and then down here it says 96 stations, but down here in the body of it says a 72 station.
It furthered, didn't I? I'm sorry.
Down at the very bottom, where it says Chaco Winity Middle-
Right in here.
-in the body of its quote.
Yeah, I was trying to figure out why.
I follow you, yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
We'll have to bring that before you, back before you.
I hope that was a typo.
Yeah, I guess it's got to be, because it's 96 everywhere besides the very last one, so.
Now seeing we have others that we're going to have to possibly replace, it sounded like, is there any possibility of getting a discount on several systems versus one?
It's already pre-negotiated through the state, through our group buying purchasing plan, so.
So no?
That's correct.
I would, I don't want to prevent a vote at all, Stan, but I want to make sure we know whether or not we're getting 72 or 96.
Yes, ma'am, we can definitely, I'll definitely clarify.
Okay.
It should be 96.
96.
I'll say assuming it's a 96 station system, I'll move approval.
Okay, all right, and we have a second? Did everybody understand that Butch is saying, assuming that it is 96, and if it's not, then we would-
I will bring it back before you.
All right.
And Chaco Winity is Chaco Winity.
So like a Chaco taco.
That's right.
Taco.
Yeah, under My Kitten quoted by My Kitten, that's got C-H-A-C-O.
That's my typo, I was reading very thoroughly tonight.
That's good, though. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All is in favor, say aye. All those opposed, motion carried. If you want to go now to the next one, Stan, which is-
The next one is definitely an item that we need to look at. We mentioned it to you back before Mr. Cheeseman came on board. It was a unit that gave us problems last year, and Mr. Dunn and I had talked about it briefly before, but we decided to wait until Mr. Cheeseman came on board to bring this back before y'all. So we have quotes for you. This is the air-conditioned unit that feeds the computer media center. It's a 10-ton unit, it's one of our biggest standalone units that we have in the system. We have replaced the coal in it once before. These systems here that we currently have, the train, have been known to vibrate and cause issues with the coal, and it's the same thing again, it rubs several holes through it. We tried to repair it in-house, and then we hired a contractor to try to repair it, and he was unable to too. I've got three prices, and this is a non-funded, so we will have to, y'all will have to decide where we pull the fund, or talk to finance about pulling the funds if y'all decide to move forward with it.
So really, the question is, is do we want to move forward with it right now, what that timeline is? And so if you give us the green light to start investigating the finance side of it, then Willie Mack and Mr. Hudson and I will meet tomorrow to figure out how to manipulate the funding so we can do this. So in short, what's the sense of urgency is what-
Well, they currently have heat, the electric heat, but they will not have any air conditioning. This is a room that makes heat, so with the heating season, or the cooling season coming quickly upon us, it's something that we need to-
What was the timeframe for getting this in? What kind of, how much time do we have?
20 days probably at the most. They probably got a two-week lead on getting the unit once we give them the green light, and it's a two-day install.
But you could potentially need AC in late March. I mean, it's-
That's it, we're, we're getting close.
I think they ought to go ahead and look at it. We just need to hear from Willie Mack, because last time we talked to him over the holidays, we didn't have funds. Then there's been some projects through that were some funds saved, but we also funded a couple of projects using some of those. Bottom line, we just need to know if there's any money.
He does have a line item for money saved from other projects. I think there's probably enough to-
I just don't know what it is, but if y'all will-
And certainly, this is a need, but at the same time, I want to make sure we're not continuing to push some projects out that are also just as needy.
Right, this one couldn't wait till our 1920 capital list. We can't. We won't be able to make it through the cooling season.
Yeah, we don't want them without AC, especially when it does get hot. So can our vote be to simply move forward with you seeing about the funding?
Yes, and in reality, you may not even have to vote in this moment. We can come back at our next session to bring back a total cost, give you a general, or a better idea of exactly the lineup that comes from.
I would, table just give him directly, leave it open.
As long as we know that you want to get this work done in the spring, then we'll bring it back at the next work session.
And in reading, you know, certainly, Stan, the first, and they're all so close.
Yeah, very tight, close bid.
Right, very tight bid. Some of them are more explanatory than others, and I don't want to assume, but I am going to assume that they all are the same scope of work.
Yes, ma'am. If they were all invited, if two of them came in the same pitch, yes, yes, ma'am. And we ask, we ask for itemized bids now, because I know y'all like to see more information, but some disclose more, and some people don't want to put it out there, so.
Now, Vance, there, did you ask them to quote train units?
We asked for-
Because it doesn't say train.
Comfort Master is what we asked for. Comfort Master is a division of Armstrong, but the Comfort Master seems to be the more commercial unit.
Armstrong quoted a train.
Yeah, Advanced Air is American Standard.
American Standard is one of our preferred too, yes.
That is train, American Standard.
It is?
But it's their commercial version of it that fits more in our line, that gives us better service.
It says train on it, so you know it's all the same. Okay, all right, so if everybody's comfortable, we're going to let Mr. Cheeseman and Willie Mack and Stan proceed with that and bring it back to us. All right, we're going to keep right on going now. Stan, was there anything else?
That's all I have, to give y'all an update on CPS. I know it was a priority amongst y'all to get it done. We have completed six rooms as of 5:00 this afternoon. I had a list here of the ones we've done, and then if everything goes as planned, they should finish up Friday. They will have a couple of bathrooms to finish up, but other than that, they're doing two a day. The first two days took one a day. They finally got it all worked out, and with us helping move everything and having helped the custodial staff, the custodial staff at CPS, one of them, gentleman got in a bad car wreck and is very sore, so not able to move stuff, and the other one's got a bad hip, so we've had to step in and really spend a lot of time helping move stuff and do things, so.
But you're seeing that they should all be finished by Friday and put back together?
Yes, ma'am, that's the goal. We're shooting for Thursday, but we've caught Friday as an open window.
And what about waxing them?
Just to clarify, you're saying the classrooms will be done?
Correct.
They may have to come back to finish some bathrooms.
They're going to do some bathrooms after hours that will not interfere with our student usage and everything. There's two staff baths that we'll have finished, they will have finished this week, that we're upgrading the toilets from the little kids' toilets to regular adult-sized, that they've been using those little bitty toilets for years, and we were not aware that they were using those restrooms for that. So we're changing out the fixtures in those two bathrooms, giving them an upgrade.
Is the waxing going to be done over Easter?
Over the summer is the plan with Ms. Vosberg, being we've got so much stuff in those rooms. Mr. Williams been out there, you know, one classroom takes that long 200 hall, just one classroom, so the logistics and keeping the kids where they can pass and keeping, we don't have anywhere to put the stuff. You know, we put some hard chairs and stuff outside, but we haven't watched the weather. It's a lot of logistics, a lot of logistics.
A lot of stuff, right, Stan?
Yes, that true, Ms. Ann.
There she goes. Her room was one of the better ones.
No, the pre-K was the whole.
Yeah, the pre-K and the EC classrooms were, they have a lot of stuff, a lot of education, a lot of useful things, but we're moving two out every day and setting two back up, so guys stayed overtime the last two days to get the rooms set back up so the custodians could clean up and have it ready for our kids the next morning, so.
So the students are really only out of their classroom a day, day and a half?
Yes, ma'am, that's, yep. And the later ones moved out this afternoon at 2:00, and some of them went outside to play, weather providing, some of them went to the gym, and we started disassembling those rooms and moving those out, so.
Well, we thank you. All right, any questions? All right, we're going to keep right on going. We are at field trips.
So members of the board, you should see three field trips for your consideration of approval. Washington High School's tier competition for Myrtle Beach, and to clarify, that will be transportation providers actually, an activity bus. Northside High School's the FPLA conference in Greensboro, and then finally, Washington High School again anticipates coming to the state track meet. So I always love it when children are ready to compete at the highest level, so.
I'd be surprised if they don't.
So with that, I appreciate your consideration for approval of the three field trips.
All right, any questions?
So moved.
Got a motion and a second? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? All right, we're doing great. Now we're going to go on to our closed session for personnel. Mr. Bilbro.
I move that we go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A 1 and 8 to prevent disclosure of confidential personnel files under General Statute 115C 321, and to consult with our attorney to consider and give instructions concerning a potential or actual claim, administrative procedure, or judicial action. The title of the action is 18CVS 157 Nersby versus Beaufort County Schools.
Okay, we have a motion. Can I get a second? A second by Terry. All those in favor? All those opposed? We are in closed session. Okay, we are now back in, back in session, and we've had a motion to come out of closed session, and approval, and a vote, and now I need a motion to approve our agenda, personnel agenda. We have a motion by Terry and a second by EC. All those in favor?
and 8 to prevent disclosure of confidential personnel files under General Statute 115C 321 and to consult with our attorney, attorney to consider and give instructions concerning a potential or actual claim, administrative procedure or judicial action. The title of the action is 18CVS 157 Nersba versus Beaufort County Schools.
Okay, we have a motion. Can I get a second? A second by Terry. All those in favor?
All right.
All those opposed? We are in closed session. Okay, we are now back in, back in session and we've had a motion to come out of closed session and approval and a vote. And now I need a motion to approve our agenda, personnel agenda. We have a motion by Terry and a second by EC. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? All right, and now we're going to go to the calendar, which as we see it now, it's just got February. So do we want to set our March calendar?
It's the same date as in March.
Okay, March 5th and March the 19th.
And the work session date, I would like to use that if you don't mind primarily to look at our budget, our budget development through the county commissioners.
Okay.
So that would be our primary focus of mine, just to look through our accounting plan and start talking about our local expenses, to start building the budget presentation for the county.
Okay, all right, that sounds great then, as long as we'll have either attachments or something as you're talking to look at.
Did you get the minority hiring?
I was just going to say, and for next, the date, I have the date, is it the 25th?
26th.
Minority hiring practices and that's at 5:30?
5.
5:00. So that's still for February next week. Are there any other dates we need to...
20, we got a meet and greet.
We do.
Somebody, we hired somebody.
Somebody is being introduced to the community on February the 28th from Beaufort at the First United Methodist Church Fellowship Hall, which is their older Fellowship Hall, but lots of parking, it's very accessible and we certainly want to invite the public to come and meet Mr. Cheeseman.
And I'll, I'll ask my wife and daughter to be there also.
All right.
Well, you sure at least a couple people show up.
Correct.
Are there any other calendar dates that we need to know? Anything going on?
I got a question on 19.
Sure.
Lisa, are we going to set up that 4:00 PM ethics?
Yes, we can.
Whatever kind of training it is? If you don't mind?
Yes.
Is 4:00 going to give us enough time?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine.
Right, anybody that wants to come for that training on the 19th of March, the ethics? TW has had it. It is a requirement though, at some point, every other year, yeah. So you haven't already done it, you can go ahead and get that done on that day and then we'll go right in, our meeting will start. Set it for dates? Board member updates?
I was asked to attend the career day at Northside High School. They had over 40 career people that graduated Northside. I would, Butch came, Will, Success, and I would encourage the other two high schools in the county to do the same. It was all Northside grads that did it and, I don't know, there was a ton of people there working. So it was a great success.
Forty-seven presenters, I think is what they had.
Wow, that's great.
Forty-seven and, and all the kids were young adults, sorry, young adults were great and they learned a lot, so I would encourage the other high schools in the county to do it.
That's great.
Not anything major, I forgot to ask Stan, so let me throw it out now. For the sanitizer machines that we have, that we use in the schools, I don't know if the principals are requesting those, but somebody might, okay, just to remind some, because I noticed a couple of schools had some sickness and I haven't seen them out there doing anything. Just remind them, we have paid for them, we might as well use them.
I can give you an update on that. There was a gentleman in the audience tonight that you may have seen, he was actually helping us with that. And they're actually doing a sale right now to look at that very product in terms of trying to get two or three for the price of one per se. And so Stan and I developed two Fridays ago somewhat of a plan of action to try to get one into all of our schools over the course of two to three years based on the costs. So I am aware that we have them now.
Yeah, we already have them, I just want to make sure they're using them because I don't have a senior being used.
They're shifting them to new buildings, but considering, yeah, they're being used.
I know a lot of, a lot of parents got phone calls and contacted about, this is flu season and the different preventative measures they'd like for you to take for your children. One of the first ones, if they present the flu symptoms, not to send them to school. So we want to make sure we keep everybody as healthy as possible out there. I think I said earlier in the meeting, the TAs that are in Beaufort County had a meeting. There are various activities going on at all of our schools right now between basketball tournaments, they're getting ready to start spring sports, there are spring concerts, there are just so many activities. And I would, I think they'll be doing Read Across America very soon. I would encourage not only our board members, but our audience out there to please participate in your community school activities because showing up and supporting our young people is one of the greatest things that you can do, in my opinion. Are there any other board member updates?
Are we still on Friday at Northeast 8:30?
Coffee with Cougars at Northeast Elementary at 8:30? All right. Mr. Cheeseman, superintendent updates?
Just a few things. So as of today, after meeting with Southside High School, I've now met 13 of the 14 school improvement teams at our schools and have taken, have taken in some great amount of notes in terms of what they believe their needs are, some of the barriers, barriers that they're running into. The final school that I need to meet with is Chaco Innity Middle School and that's already slated on the calendar. Once I have that, the goal is to provide you the information so you can look at in terms of what our employees think they need to be successful, which I think will be very important for you to look at. As already stated, I met with TAs last Saturday, but as a result of that, the president of their organization and I are going to meet on a monthly basis, just to ensure that we're focusing on some of the greatness that they're doing as TAs, so our community and our county commissioners start to recognize the value that we have in those individuals, especially if we may need to work with our county to figure out a solid funding stream to keep them in our presence in the future. So we'll meet on a monthly basis. Also, on March 26th through the 30th is the next state superintendent's quarterly meeting, followed by a conference there. But on the eve of the 26th, myself, other superintendents, and you're welcome to join me, we will be meeting with our legislators together as superintendents to talk about some of the issues that we're having specifically around calendar flexibility, funding, staffing in the state. So with that, I want you to know that face to face, I'll be working with our state legislators on March 26th in that evening. You're welcome to attend with me, just let me know if you'd like to go, but we may need to drive separately if you'd like to attend that dinner meeting with us. And that would be other superintendents in the RISA, maybe some of their board members. You may see some of our legislators and some from other areas. This Thursday, I'll be attending a RISA meeting, which is our monthly meeting in Pitt County, where all of the superintendents will come together and talk about some of these legislative priorities. And then finally, just to let you know, I was approached and asked to run for election with the North Carolina ASCD and that's the association specifically around school curriculum and development. And I think it was two weeks ago, I went to Pinehurst and I was successfully voted on to their board of directors, which gives Beaufort County Schools a seat at the table when they talk about statewide and national curriculum development. So I'm very excited about that and, and so I just want you to know that we're at the table in that term. So I'm very excited. So with that, again, you have really intelligent people working in the district and I've been excited to work with them and, and now I know more about flooring than I ever did know, but it's very exciting and the work is going to get done. And one last, one last but not least announcement, so, and I'll share this with you before you leave. Golden Leaf Foundation, the official letter arrived in the mail today. So congratulations to you as board of education members for signing off on the grant application. Golden Leaf has let us know that the Beaufort County Sea Academy, we have been awarded $1.235 million to bring a Sea Academy around career and technical education here to Beaufort County Schools. So we're very excited about that. Tomorrow, I'll meet with Washington, the Daily News here in Washington, to talk about marketing strategies for Beaufort County Schools, to also talk about the Sea Academy grant. And today, I actually met with Channel 9, Ms. Allen was the reporter, Courtney Allen came to interview me about calendar flexibility, so I'm sure you can see that on their website. But we are trying to market Beaufort County Schools and get our name out there about the great things that are happening for our kids.
At what point would the details of that be shared with the board as far as what plans they have for this month?
Sure. So with that, we're going to host a meeting on March 11th, I believe. I think that's correct, I think it's a Monday. March 11th, there'll be a meeting here, we're on lay all of you, but it will be a first read. So there will be about 10 or 11 other personnel in the district that will sit with me and we'll literally just read through the grant in terms of what it means, because not everybody knows what it means. And then secondly, we'll develop an appropriate timeline for when it would roll out, meaning what's the desired outcome or desired date? Are you shooting for August of 2019? Are you truly shooting for August of 2020? And knowing that you'd like to do it correct the first time, you're, you're likely looking at the later date. But with that, in that meeting, we'll also talk about what the next steps are in terms of looking at EdTech, rebranding the building, whatever it might be. But that will be March 11th. All right? It's great. Yes ma'am?
I forgot to say to you to, and especially to the Bath residents, that Governor Cooper has appointed me to the Bath Historical Committee.
Hey, congratulations.
So I will be doing what I can to help you.
Great.
Awesome.
All we ask is a seat at the table, right? And we're so glad to get one, so you'll speak on our behalf, please? That's great. All right, is there anything else?
I'll make a motion adjourn.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn in a second. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed?[1741.13]